I will call the February 23, 2021 Town Council Meeting to order. We will begin as we always do with the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you can see, we're working a modified in-person format here for the council. All of our viewers will be on Zoom, and as such, we will be taking questions from Zoom. Item Agenda C is public comment, and we will have this in two formats. The first stage will be Paula Ray, the Town Clerk, will read any written notes that have come in. The second, we will go to Zoom. Paula.
I have one comment for you to make now just by a simple link. With the potential of a June referendum for the High School Building Project staff approaching, I was concerned to hear a heated discussion about the 1928 building at its late date. I understand that these buildings may have sentimental value for residents, so they expect to desire to be thoughtful and careful about what to do with it. However, I believe if this is not resolved by the June vote, the project will be voted down because residents will want to know what's going on with this building. As you know, the candidates forward for this to not pass yet. I have followed this process closely. I am in favor of demolition. The building has no use, and the renovation is priced. If the council doesn't want to be the one--
Paula, Paula, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you bring your mic front closer to you?
If the council doesn't want to be the one determining demolition, then please consider adding the $1 million loss of wallet into the larger project and let the voters decide if it's worth renovating it during your future. If you're not going to go with demolition, then the 1928 building should be treated separately with a clear and distinct plan. It should be up to the voters to determine if they would like to take on additional $9 million costs, and then an ad hoc committee should be formed to explore potential uses, not before. Time is of the essence to rebuild a failing building. Please don't let this one aspect slow it down. I am also concerned about waiting to decide until 2024 demolition day. I believe that this will most certainly delay the project, stem the traffic issues that will come with it, and disrupt students as the campus will need to, reconsider once it is determined that the building will be in terms of parking, et cetera. I respectfully add that you are required to follow when making this decision. What is the impact of waiting? How much time construction and traffic would it add to the project as it stands with the 1928 building as renovated and used? Is this building actually historic? Yes, it has sentimental value, and yes, it has a attractive landmark. But is it of historical value to the community? Is it worth $9.5 million? Consider needs versus wants. Do we need a new high school now? Do we want to salvage a building because it has sentimental value and possibly delay or negate something that this council has worked hard to move forward?
Thanks, Paula. We will now turn to Anna. If you will raise your hand virtually, please state your name, and we will be trying to limit comments to five minutes in respect for the other people who would wish to speak.
All right, Tim Kelly, I unmuted your mic if you want to speak.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick sound check. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, Tim.
Terrific. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview Terrace. I want to comment on the school system capital request. So the council members page ahead may be referred to attachment to spreadsheet in the agenda package. Setting aside the new high school building proposal, the annual request is for $4 million from the BOE. And it looks as though we're trying to cram a couple, three years into one budget cycle at this point. Now, the first line item for technology is certainly important. It's really the backbone of everything we do now. However, the sixth line item on the report is for an FHS roof replace, which makes absolutely no sense given the current plan to demolish the majority of the facility, maybe all of it. I'd like to suggest a different approach for dealing with some of the other line items on this school request list. Like it or not, the federal government has already approved $113 billion for K through 12 schools, and will shortly earmark an additional $129 billion. We should package up several of these projects and set them aside for federal COVID relief funding. And we should have a specific point person pursuing this. So as an example, we're looking for $185,000 for what I'm going to call COVID-resistant furniture. So that might be something that goes in a different column, or the West District COVID-damaged flooring replacement. Or below that, we could combine a couple of line items. District-wide mechanical and structural could be COVID-related ventilation and structural improvements. So if you take off the FHS roof for 120, and then look at those other four line items, that takes you up to $1.2 million of either not doing or funding a different way. And then the other large item that stands out to me is the IAR cafeteria, which seems to be a nice-to-have right now. Certainly helpful, but perhaps not urgent, and that's $1.3 million. Or, you know, that may be a shovel-ready social distancing project for COVID funding. Anyway, when you go through that, you can very quickly come up with $2.5 million, which could be, again, subtracted from the $4 million school capital request. And I guess I look for your thoughtful consideration in terms of separating these items into the ones we have to do pronto and maybe the ones that can be set in a different column looking towards federal funding that may be flowing downhill in our direction. Thank you.
That was the only handoff.
Okay. Does anyone else have public comment? All right, seeing none. We'll be moving on to item D1. Paula.
A public hearing is called for at 6:06 PM. Public comment at Farmington hyphen C C dot org or by calling--
Anna.
Apologies, can you reset?
Sure. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 23, 2021, at 6:00 PM, online via Zoom webinar on the Town Manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan. Comments can be sent to the Town Council until 12 noon on February 23, 2021, and are accepted via email to publiccomment@farmingtonhyphencc.org or by calling 860-673-8282, sending a voicemail. Please provide your name and address for emailing or calling in for public comment. Calling comments are limited to five minutes. Please call the Town Manager's office at 860-675-2350. With any questions, the name of Farmington, Connecticut, is the 11th day of February 2021. Kathy Blonsky, Town Manager.
Paula. Anna.
We're now going to watch our video of the public hearing.
It's moving on.
Kathy Blonsky, Town Manager, and tonight I am presenting the 21, 22, 27, 28 Capital Improvement Program. The Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, is the planning document by which the Town of Farmington plans for the improvements it will undertake over the next seven years. For a project to qualify as a capital improvement, the cost of the item or project should be at least $25,000, and the improvement should have a useful life of at least five years. Equipment or projects which cost less than $25,000 or which have useful lives of less than five years do not qualify as a capital improvement and should be included as an expense in the operating budget. Although a capital improvement may have a recurring or ongoing operating expense related to its purchase or construction, that expense is not included in the CIP but is included in the operating budget. Projects in the CIP may be funded from a variety of sources: appropriations, bonding, a state or federal grant, or another source of funds. Highlights of the Town of Farmington's capital improvement policy are as follows. The Town will strive to maintain a high reliance on pay-as-you-go financing for its capital improvements. The Town's objective will be to contribute at least 2.5% of the operating budget's annual general fund revenue to the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan calls for the expenditure of $207,748,166 over the next seven years. Of this amount, $46,164,166 is proposed to be funded through appropriations from the general fund. Bonding authorizations totaling $133,759,000 are also proposed. Other appropriations include anticipated state reimbursement for the Farmington High School building project totaling $27,500,000, and $100,000 for the skate park at Tungusus Mead, and $150,000 for new sidewalks in Farmington Village Center. A reappropriation of $75,000 for a highway maintenance truck is budgeted in fiscal year 21, 22. The Town's capital improvement policy and the Town's strategic plan were the policy guidelines that were at the forefront when formulating the CIP. Last year, due to COVID-19 and financial uncertainties, the Town significantly reduced capital expenditures. This CIP attempts to make up for the minimal capital budget in fiscal year 21. Fiscal year 21, 22 of the capital improvement plan calls for the expenditure of $145,786,166. Of this amount, $4,227,166 is proposed to be funded through appropriations from the general fund, and $113,734,000 is proposed to be funded through bonding. $27,750,000 is proposed to be funded through other funds, state grants, and $75,000 is a reappropriation. Equipment, infrastructure, maintenance improvement summary. Each year in the capital budget, we strive to make steady progress in this area. There is a continuous need to maintain the Town's equipment and infrastructure, and these needs touch all departments. Each department has equipment replacement plans. This critical equipment keeps our volunteer firefighters safe when responding to calls for service. It allows our roads to be properly maintained by the highway and ground staff. It also keeps our school grounds, parks, and golf courses looking clean and ready for play during the warm weather months. Equipment replacement ensures the Town's ability to offer high-quality services to our residents and businesses. This capital improvement plan proposes to fund equipment purchases for the replacement of turnout gear and a medic truck for the fire department, as well as a large dump truck and a bobcat tool cat for the public works department. These purchases fund equipment that is used every day. They respond to calls for service to our residents and maintain the rails to trails, fields, and town roads. Infrastructure improvements are an important component of this capital plan. Streetscape improvements on Main Street in Farmington continue to be funded. These funds will be combined with grant dollars and prior funding for replacement sidewalks in accordance with the quality-of-life improvements recommended in the Village Center Streetscape Master Plan. This funding is for Phase 1 of the sidewalk improvement plan that will start at Route 4 and proceed to the Highland Park Plaza on the west side and Main Gate on the east side, which includes a segment of new sidewalk. The proposed capital improvement plan continues to fund renovations and/or improvements to town-owned buildings or properties. Funding for the upcoming year is proposed to continue funding renovations at the Stone House, the Town Hall, and to begin a significant renovation project for the three main fire stations with startup funds for a newly established building committee. Funds are also included to make needed repairs at the Police Range House as well as a fund for unanticipated repairs to various buildings as the need arises. With our newest buildings approaching 20 years old, unanticipated repairs are on the rise. Several large unanticipated repairs were seen in the past few years, and this CIP attempts to have funds available for those unanticipated repairs. Technology and communication summary. In the 21st century, a town's technology infrastructure must be maintained. It must keep up with the rapidly changing world of technology as well as the expectations of residents and businesses. Townwide technology improvements, as well as improvements specific to the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Town Hall are proposed in this capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan will provide funds to the Police Department for the purchase of body cameras. Body cameras are now a required piece of equipment under the recent Police Accountability Bill. Officers will have both body cameras and in-car video cameras. The body cameras will have ongoing yearly cost as well as replacement cost in the future. Funding to purchase additional interoperable portable radios is also proposed for the Police Department. Line officers will have these radios and will be able to communicate with other agencies who use different radio frequencies. Funding will continue a multi-phase communication upgrade in the Fire Department. These funds will replace obsolete mobile and portable radios. Technology is constantly evolving, and the proposed capital improvement plan will continue to provide routine technology improvements to Town Hall and other town facilities, allowing all departments to deliver public goods and services effectively and efficiently. I will now review the budget in detail. Proposed bonding. I will now summarize the first year of proposed bonding, other funding, and reappropriations. Board of Education, $110 million, Farmington High School building project. This is the projected net municipal cost with an anticipated June referendum. $1,284,000, IAR cafeteria addition and renovation. $450,000, Noah Wallace partial roof replacement. Engineering Department, $2 million for road reconstruction. Proposed other funding. This capital plan includes $27,500,000 in anticipated state reimbursement for the Farmington High School building project. $100,000 for Tungusus Mead improvements, which would be the skateboard park, and $150,000 for the Planning Department for Farmington Center improvements, specifically the sidewalks in Farmington Village to Highland Park Market Plaza. Reappropriation. A reappropriation of $75,000 is for a highway maintenance truck. General fund cash appropriations. I will now summarize the department request for the first year of the capital improvement plan. Board of Education. The Board of Education is recommending $2,197,166 for Board of Education projects. The Board of Education will be addressing these projects in detail after this presentation. I am recommending $125,000 in the Engineering Department for light pole replacements, bridge repairs, and environmental compliance. I am recommending $308,000 in the Highway Department that includes irrigation improvements for our athletic fields and various equipment replacements. I am recommending $150,000 to the Planning Department. Funds will be combined with grant dollars and prior funding to complete Phase 1, which is the replacement of sidewalks on Main Street. I am recommending $357,000 in the Fire Department, which will be used for the replacement of turnout gear, a multi-phase communication upgrade, Knox boxes, apparatus replacement, and funds to enable a new fire station building committee to begin work with an architect. I am recommending $325,000 in the Police Department. This includes funding for a new supervisor SUV, technology improvements, a communication upgrade, and funding for shooting range improvements. I am recommending $590,000 in the Town Manager's Office. This includes technology upgrades, Town Hall improvements, building and equipment improvements, reevaluation costs, and land record re-indexing. I am recommending $175,000 in Community and Recreation to continue renovations on the exterior and interior of the Stone House and to begin youth center repairs and improvements in accordance with a recently completed facility study. The capital budget attempts to make up for some of the lost ground from the previous year's CIP. This capital budget will allow us to make headway to meet the Town's capital improvement needs. The Police Accountability Act has required significant funding needs in the Police Department, and revaluation funds are also required and cannot be delayed. The cost of maintaining the Town's infrastructure through the CIP is a necessary expense that must be recognized. The need for funds to maintain the Town's property, buildings, and equipment is often greater than the willingness of the Town to appropriate funds to meet those needs. However, the cost of not maintaining the Town's property, building, and equipment will have a significant long-term impact. It may be tempting to defer a cost today to save money. However, the cost of deferred maintenance and repairs does not disappear. It accumulates and will likely increase in the future. The proposed first-year cash appropriation is $4,227,166, with the Town's portion at $2,030,000 and the Board's portion at $2,197,166. This is well above what we have historically been funding for capital projects, not including the significantly reduced funding from last year. Since 2005, through the Town's capital improvement policy, our capital plan strives to contribute at least 2.5% of the annual general fund revenues allocated to the operating budget. A capital budget of 2.5% would be $2,822,000. The Town Council's direction was to try to raise the capital plan this year. Using 3%, the capital plan would be $3,386,000. That would be a reduction of $841,166. I look forward to working with the Town Council tonight as we review my proposed capital improvement plan. This seven-year plan adequately reflects the needs of the Town. Moreover, the proposed plan exceeds our policy guidelines. I will now turn the presentation over to Superintendent Greeter and her team to present the Board of Education's request.
Okay. And Anna, now you're going to do the board's part.
Good evening, Farmington Community, Board of Education, and Town Council. This is Alicia Bohm, an Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations for the Farmington Public Schools, and it is my pleasure to present the Farmington Board of Education's capital budget to you this evening. Guided by our philosophy, the development of our capital budget priorities is a collaborative and strategic planning opportunity for the school district administration and the Board of Education. The Farmington Public Schools K-8 facilities review informs our short- and long-term facility goals that we continue to prioritize in the budget process. Then, as a central office team, we assess the recommendations from our school leaders, the comprehensive facility review, and up-to-date safety and security guidance to develop our capital budget proposal for the 2021, 2022 school year and beyond. And that is what we are sharing with you this evening. My colleagues, Matt Ross, Director of Technology, and Sam Kilpatrick, Director of Facilities, and I will walk you through the 14 buckets of our capital improvement requests. As in the past, we use the system of organizing our proposals into buckets to align with the Town's approach to developing and implementing a capital budget. The buckets include: technology infrastructure, school security, IAR cafeteria addition, school code and safety, cafeteria equipment, roof replacement FHS, Noah Wallace partial roof replacement, classroom furniture, West District corridor flooring, district-wide MEP, structural and architectural, telephone system, replacement of vehicles, and the FHS mascot. Despite a very difficult year with many unexpected facility needs, we are proud of all that we have been able to accomplish in the 2020, 2021 school year. We were able to complete second-grade classroom furniture, which completes our elementary furniture upgrade throughout the district, the Westwoods dehumidification project, installation of the Westwoods playground, the Union School electrical upgrade, and the replacement of our mechanics vehicle. In addition, we had many COVID-19-related expenses that weren't anticipated, including upgrades and reprogramming of building automation equipment. We commissioned an engineering firm to complete a thorough analysis of our ventilation systems district-wide and the exhaust ventilation upgrade projects at Union and Noah Wallace schools. We also have several projects that are currently in process. Overall, you will see that our total capital improvement request is $3,931,166. I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Matt Ross, Director of Technology, to share with you our technology requests for 2021, 22.
Thank you, Alicia. The total amount requested in Board of Education Technology Capital Improvement for 2021 to 2022 is $550,000 and is in line with our seven-year projected capital plan. Due to significant reductions in capital funding for 2020, 2021, several projects were delayed or are being pushed back by a year. This slide illustrates the various technology investment buckets in which we are proposing capital improvement dollars. Classroom AV upgrades, network equipment, and data room business continuity and disaster recovery, or BCDR, are areas that were reduced in the 2020, 2021 capital improvement budget, and we are now looking to pick up where we left off. Additionally, in accordance with our technology capital plan, desktop computer replacements have come back around to another multi-year phased replacement cycle. As mentioned in previous years, these desktop replacements are typically spread over three years with an expected five-year lifespan on the devices. Security. This area provides funding for the continued phasing and upgrading of security measures within the district according to the Farmington Police Department's recommendations and the K-8 facilities review report recommendations. A significant amount of this request is for the planned systematic replacement of components of the security system which are reaching or have reached their life expectancy. We are also looking to expand our camera coverage in strategic locations and to continue with other security enhancements, such as window film and access control. I will now turn it over to Sam Kilpatrick, Director of Facilities, to review the remaining items.
Thank you, Matt. We are requesting $1,284,000 for the renovation of the Irving Robbins Cafeteria and Food Service Area. This amount includes $84,000 for design development, which had been approved in last year's budget process but subsequently reduced due to the pandemic. In addition to that, we have also included the budgetary placeholder from the Friar Report of $1.2 million to facilitate construction in the summer of 2022. Noted in the Friar Report, the Irving Robbins Cafeteria is undersized for the student enrollment. These snapshots from building floor plans show that the space is about 75% of the size of three classrooms there. This capacity constraint necessitates four lunch waves, a scheduling dilemma that limits flexibility in academic scheduling. To maintain compliance with fire and life safety codes, we are requesting $100,000 in this account. we are requesting $100,000 in this account. Projects included are Union Doors and East Farms Fire Door Hardware, which were deferred due to reductions in budget. Noah Wallace Exterior Lighting is a project that my predecessor had planned for this fiscal year request and is pictured in this slide. Our request of $91,000 for cafeteria equipment reflects an assessment that much of our kitchen equipment is of the same vintage and is reaching the end of its life cycle. We need to prioritize systematic replacement to avoid mounting repair costs, or more importantly, interruption to program. This amount includes a steamer at the high school, which was deferred last year, and a piece of equipment at each school in the district. $120,000 is for repairs to the high school roof. With the high school building project not yet decided, we continue to experience water infiltration, particularly in the two areas indicated on this slide. We have done spot repairs and added roof drains, but the issues still persist. This allocation would allow us to do a more comprehensive repair, though still well short of the $650,000 project than it would be to replace the entire yellow section on this roof plan. Noah Wallace Roof Replacement. Part of last year's request, we are again seeking $450,000 to replace the two roof sections indicated on this slide. This would complete the roof project at Noah Wallace and would also complete the roof replacement cycle for the District K through eight. Our furniture request is $185,000. This is a continuation of our district replacement cycle to a more modern, collaborative, and flexible style that is proving successful at all grade levels. Delayed this past year due to COVID-19, the first phase of Irving Robbins replacements will be classroom furniture. Originally proposed as an abatement and replacement project, West District Corridor Flooring was included last year as an overlay project within structural/architectural account, but it was deferred due to budget reductions. This year, we have separated it out as a standalone project to simplify the process of seeking state reimbursement for the abatement and replacement project that was originally proposed. Our MEP request is $410,000. A number of the MEP projects listed here are continued phased projects. New projects to this list include the replacement of thermal wheels in the heat exchange system at Westwoods and the removal of one of the three remaining underground oil tanks in the district. $260,000 is requested for structural and architectural projects, which are listed here. Projects pictured here include continued replacement of flooring at Noah Wallace on the top left, a full assessment and design for repairs to the Noah Wallace facade on the lower left. On the bottom right, similar to the West District project, Irving Robbins is in need of flooring replacement, which would also start with corridors. And on the top right is the West District chimney, which appears to need a new cap and repairs to the brick masonry.
Telephone System. This bucket is a banking bucket in which we are beginning to build back capital dollars for an expected phone system upgrade in 2025.
In our replacement of vehicles bucket, we are asking to bank funds for the future replacement of our district Suburbans. In the FHS mascot bucket, these funds are for potential projects as a result of the newly adopted school mascot. Funds may be necessary for the turf, scoreboards, and other signage replacements. The K-8 Facility Review Report guides our out-years or future capital projects as well. Examples of future capital projects include the replacement of vehicles, telephone system upgrade, mechanical system improvements at Westwoods Upper Elementary School, which is reaching a milestone age of 20 years, and repairs to the Noah Wallace School facade.
So again, in sum, this is our capital improvement request. It's a reflection of ensuring that we continue to follow the recommendations of the K-8 Facility Report, that we are staying up to date with code, safety, security, as well as thinking of lasting implications of COVID-19 protocols and restoring some of the projects that we were not able to accomplish in last year's budget cycle. And lastly, hard to read on this slide, but you all received a copy in your packet. It's just an outlook on our seven-year capital improvement budget.
I think that wraps up our presentation, and I think the next item would be any public comment for the budget.
Go to the public. If anyone would like to raise their hand and have any comments on the public hearing of the proposed seven-year capital improvement. See no hand raised. Only one. Okay, no public comment?
We will close the public here.
6:36, we will be closing the public here.
I intend to item E1 and make a motion to consider the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 to 2027 through 2028 seven-year capital improvement plan. Joe, Captain, for a second.
And motion to second. Any discussion?
So CJ, you see your schedule and what's on the cutting page. And what's going to happen now is that the Board of Education is going to be joining you with staff. I'm going to be leaving, but I'll be upstairs and Joe and it's up in my staff. We have you slated for about an hour, just to let you know on the timing. After the Board of Education is done, we'll take a quick break, and we have some boxed lunches. I think boxed dinners, some sandwiches. We'll have that. And then we'll start with my department head. We'll be back. And we have the Fire, Public Works, Community, Rapid Police Department, and then my office. So that's the schedule for today. Typically, you guys do not see any action on the capital plan, and that you do that just the reason for this meeting is so we have our regular budget in about two weeks, and this gives you more time to go through the capital. So then at the March meeting, you can focus on the operating budget and then reduce it a little bit less than you would have to. And so with that, if you need it, Joe or I will be listening upstairs, and we can either go through the phone or we'll come downstairs. But the floor is out of the hallway. And we're just going to, I'm just going to clean up a little bit and then go on upstairs.
Very good. And just for the public, what we're doing is rotating in and out of the different departments. We're going to start with the town manager, leaving the office, creating the workspace, making space for the Board of Education to come in. And we will do the same throughout the evening when we're bringing in different departments. But we felt this would be much easier than working through Zoom, where we could actually be in the same space, separated by our partition and six feet wearing our masks, and actually being able to have a conversation without the worry of someone losing connections, which was often made when I was in the town.
Okay. I'll send the next group in.
Very good.
Officer Chair.
Yes.
Officially, at the end of each session, please you have a tentative approval of that session.
Okay. You should have space for every other chair up there hopefully for you. There's something odd about doing a budget while wearing masks. Okay, we're up on Board of Education. Kathy Greeter, do you want to start, or Ellen, do you want to start?
Thank you, CJ. And good evening, everyone. And I just want to thank you for having us here, having us here in person. You know, as we already presented our 2021-2022 capital improvement. But I just want to take a moment to introduce who's here. We have our superintendent of schools, Karen Greeter. We have Alicia Bowman, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, our Director of Technology, Matt Ross, and our, we have both the new Director of Facilities, Sam, a tactic. So he's with us here tonight. So you did see our presentation. And so, you know, what you saw tonight really shows the continued commitment that the Farmington Public Schools, you know, have to occasionally facilities, review recommendations. And you also see the board's responsibility to maintain safe schools and make sure our schools are up to date and compliant with current building codes. And most importantly, that our buildings make sure that they support our educational programming. So as Alicia said, as we all know, last year was extremely difficult, you know, due to the anticipated COVID crisis. It was very challenging. But I think last year, I'm very grateful. We worked together as a board and a council, and we worked collaboratively. And we shared in the tough choices and the tough decisions and the tough reductions in the budget. It was very difficult, but I hope that the news is better and that we find our town in a more positive financial outlook. So with that in mind, you saw our capital request is a building back of reductions from last year and keeping us all in hand to stay on pace with our K28 facility projects, which I know is a priority for the town and the board. So we are here. We are happy to answer your questions. And just before I turn it over, I just want to say that on behalf of the Board of Education, we are so thrilled that a referendum date is being set for the Farmington High School building project. And I know we're all in agreement that our high school is at the end of life. And we need to do better for our students. We need to do better for our community. And we're just so happy to be working with you and the Building Committee and the community so that we can present an efficient and safer new high school facility. We're very excited. So now I'm going to turn it over to Alicia Bowman.
Thank you, Ellen. So I'd like to point out to the Town Council that the Union School elevator was inadvertently left on our MEP request despite prior approval in the 2019-2020 budget. This project was dependent on the electrical upgrade at Union School, which was completed this past summer. The elevator replacement is in progress, the plan for completion in the summer, the summer 2021. So therefore, the Board of Ed's MEP request for 2021-2022 can be reduced by $200,000 for revised total request of $210,000 for MEP. We have updated our proposals. The most tactics were at your seat. And we have an updated presentation to reflect this adjustment. We apologize for any confusion that we may have caused. And our new total capital request is $3,731,166. Any questions about that? I just wanted to make sure that's clear and that is reflected in the documents that we shared with you this evening. And like Ellen said, we look forward to further conversation with the Town Council regarding our capital request.
Any questions on that, take your time. Alicia, thank you very much. Did you say the MEP was reduced by 210? Is this, what's in this 210, or what's?
So in our presentation that we did, that we played for you, we hadn't made the adjustments. And we wanted to put forth, Chris, a board-approved budget request. So I wanted to share that reduction with you in person. So that packet that was on your table this evening is revised, and it is reflective of the new request. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Who's next?
So you can bring us to any of the projects, any questions that you have at this point. Already presented, the entire capital request.
Good, thanks. Any more questions, Chris?
Yes, Luke. Thank you, Kathy, Alicia, and everybody, Ellen, for coming tonight and presenting your budget. It might be a general question. I think it was, I thought it might be good if we discussed this a little bit. It was touched on by Tim Kelly in the open, his public comment. I don't know if you heard those, but it's sort of, if we can discuss holistically, I know we received some grant funding, and just COVID funding relative to how it would apply to the budget sort of holistically, not in any particular line item, but just if we can discuss that issue.
So we did receive funding this year that helped us to not have to come to Town Council for additional funding. There were many COVID-related expenses that we did not anticipate when we were going through the approval process of the 2020-2021 budget. So in our financials each month, we share with the board what that funding has been. And, you know, those are things like PPE, cleaning supplies, because we have to do much more aggressive cleaning now, barriers that exist for every student in our school district, as well as our offices, and many, many other expenses. And I think.
Technology was a huge component of how we spent the money because we have to, as you know, we made some reductions last year, but we also had to lift a level of our technology to provide one-to-one for all of our students, as well as the access of live teaching from classrooms into homes. So.
So this year was more about submitting to the state our expenses and getting reimbursement for those expenses. Going forward, we already know that we're getting extra two funds, and they are not only for '21-22, but they're also for '22-23. They're based on our Title I allocation. So each district receives different amounts depending on their Title I funding from the federal level. And we received approximately $1 million, or we will receive approximately $1 million in that particular area. There are, we have to go through an application process, and there are only a certain number of items that we must adhere to when we're applying for those funds. So we have already determined what those areas will be. This is all about educational recovery, knowing that our students are experiencing learning loss. And we also know that we have additional social, emotional, well-being issues that we're also dealing with. And you can imagine, we're going on a year of, for some students, remote learning for an entire year because they, their parents this year selected remote learning. And so we know that, you know, between disruptions, whether it's we're in hybrid or students who have selective remote only, and even in-person, it's very different, just like it's very different tonight in our in-person meetings. And that has an effect on our students. So knowing that and knowing the research that we're seeing right now of the impact of hybrid versus in-person versus remote, we are experiencing a level of learning loss for our students that we are trying to accelerate right now. But those funds are absolutely targeted for learning acceleration and mental health and social, emotional well-being. Also, family. Also family connections that we can make, we can use that money for that. And so it's acceleration, interventions, social, emotional well-being, and I'm trying to say family support. They do have actually an area for ventilation system in EXR2. So those are the buckets. And, you know, our EXR2 funding, we've determined we would use half in 22, sorry, 2122, $500,000, and half in 2223, because we do see this as a two-year recovery. And so that's how we're going to utilize the funds. And we have plans, we have to fill out an application for those funds and a needs assessment. And so we already have determined some of the areas that we will be utilizing those funds for. Oh, another area is remote learning, so you can use some of it to enhance an intermodal learning program. So that's basically how that's going to work. So we did not put those things, all those different areas, we did not put in our operating budget because we felt that that was more, it was more appropriate to be funded through EXR2 funds. So when you see our operating budget in March, you'll see that we separated those outside of our operating budget, those areas, so that we can, between our operating budget and EXR2 funds, really support our students through this very difficult time that we've been through the last year and that we will continue to go through as we look forward to the 2122 school year. We know that masks and mitigation practices will most likely be in place in 2122. We're also hearing from the governor right now that there is a chance that remote learning will also continue. And so we're waiting to hear about that as well, because there are additional, you know, costs to doing that.
Okay, thank you, Doc. Other questions?
Thanks CJ. First of all, thank you to all of you for your hard work and for being here today. It's great to see everybody and for your presentations as well, thank you. My question is on the IAR cafeteria addition renovation. So we heard a little bit about it in the presentation. I was hoping that you could expand a little bit more on that. I think in the presentation, we heard there's three lunch waves right now. So would the addition renovation reduce that to two lunch waves? Or would there still be three lunch waves? If you could talk a little bit to how it's currently undersized. And then looking at kind of like on, I think page 11 here, where it shows the schematics of kind of what it looks like here. You have kind of three classrooms there, so would it be replacing three, will part of this replace three existing classrooms? Can you just provide a little bit of clarity kind of on all of those points?
Sure, you want? So the diagram is just to illustrate the size, how undersized the cafeteria is. So basically just to show you that is equal to about, would you say, two and a half classrooms? Sam, two and three quarters or so. Just to show you how the proportion of this current cafeteria. It seats 160 students at a time. And of course, that's not in COVID times, that's in real time. An IAR is approximately 690 students. It takes up about two hours of this whole day for lunch waves. And it's purely undersized for the number of students. It's also something that was noted in the prior report. I think just at this time, we'd like to be able to not have our facility drive our instructional programming, and that's unfortunately what's happening. So there's that component, the instructional component, and then just the actual facility itself doesn't suit the number of students at that school.
Gotcha. So with the addition and renovation, you mentioned that there's now a two-hour block of time that's required for lunch. Does that get reduced?
Yes, definitely.
So what would that approximately be reduced to?
So the goal, without going into all of the details, but the goal really is to shift the scheduling at the middle school, and we've been unable to do that. So it's more like the high schools longer chunks, longer periods, also known as block scheduling. And this would allow us to do that. Right now, our lunch periods are equal to our instructional time. And that's not how we would want it. We would want our lunch periods to be significantly less than an instructional block. And again, without going so into the weeds of it, it really is a driver of the school schedule. And it's limiting opportunities for kids as well because that longer chunk takes up four blocks within the school day. And we'd like to reduce that. I don't, I think the best is to have, or the goal, I'm sorry, is to have three lunch waves instead of four.
Okay, so there's currently four and it would potentially reduce to three.
Two per grade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just, thank you CJ. Just to follow up with Ed's question, obviously the board is considering other issues at East Farms with the population. And how does that dovetail with this project in terms of being a release out for, you know, achieving your programmatic needs at the school?
I don't, I don't know if there's necessarily a connection. You're saying is there a connection between East Farms and IAR?
No, no, just with the overcrowding at the kindergarten level and the issues you've talked about as coordination being delayed on it, does this dovetail or work with that in terms of providing additional meeting or programmatic needs of, let's say, or does taking some kids maybe out of East Farms to Noah Wallace help relieve the pressure on the cafeteria?
This is at IAR.
Not at IAR.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, I said, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was going to try to make it clear, but I'm like, that's okay. I was thinking, go across the street.
Yeah, we have to, thank you.
Hi, everyone, thanks for coming tonight. Couple of things on the cafeteria. Maybe just for the general public, how long has this project been in the works? When did we start the design work? And maybe just start with that right there, just for people listening on how this came about or how long we've been planning for this.
So the design work is within the total amount. We had planned to do design in 2020, 2021, but it was deferred. So this would be the year that the project was going to be requested. We always try to do design first and then the project. So in the presentation, because of the deferment last year, we decided that we would still take, you know, this summer and through the 2122, we would do design. And then in the summer of 2022, the construction would occur. This has been in the works, I mean, it's been a few years because it's been on the seven-year plan. It's also part of the prior report. And it definitely has become a priority in recent years as we've tried. We've had many attempts to try to change the schedules at IAR. Even with the current schedule, it is undersized. You know, not that we hope, you know, we're hoping COVID, at some point, we don't have to do the social distancing we do now, but we're now having lunch both in this undersized cafeteria. But because it's so undersized, we have to go all throughout the building to do lunch, including using half the gymnasium, which is having programmatic impact because we can't use half the gymnasium every day. So this year, it's having quite a significant impact. And that also requires more personnel because we have to monitor students in different areas. So even if we did not have COVID and we were just experiencing a normal year, we had to go out into the hallway for students to eat because there's just simply not enough room in the cafeteria. And students are very, very close to each other when they're eating lunch just to try to, yeah, with the four lunch waves. So I couldn't do anything, I could go back and just look. I would say at least three to four years.
Okay, and now this 1.2 million, this is the building cost or a combination of design fees? Just clarify that again.
So what we did there was take the budgetary placeholder that was included within the prior report, just as a placeholder to go forward. Obviously, we won't cover that construction cost until we have a design, if you do, proper.
Are you including both the design and the projected cost for?
So one more too is the placeholder from the prior report for construction costs. And that'd be $4,000,000 would be the amount that we were requesting for designing last year.
And what type, would this project qualify for some type of reimbursement from the state?
Yeah.
Same, same kind of thing we're looking at with the high school, 20% higher, less?
Well, it would be considered, and Sam will tell me if I'm wrong, it would be considered a renovation, right?
A renovation extension, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be the 28 point some, you know, it would be the higher percentage.
28, 28%?
Yeah, about 28%.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Thank you. I'm glad we're talking about budget, because that's very important. But I think it's also important to talk about the benefits and the use. Now, we've talked about to the students and to the school. But we haven't talked about other benefits to the community because I know a lot of adult education and activities go on. And we talked about the benefit to the overall community and additional going on for the school so that we know what this is going to do for us.
So I don't know, Alicia, you want to talk just about building use? Sure, anytime we improve our facilities, and in this case, it's an expansion, a bit of an expansion, it certainly has many benefits for our students, but also our community.
Absolutely. The part of, if you can picture where the cafeteria is located at IAR, it's an exterior, you know, on an exterior side that allows for us to expand and not really interrupt into the school building. But as far as facilities, this year has been a very different year. But prior to that, we have competing requests for building use within our community, whether it's continuing education, whether it is parking refus, other outside groups that are looking for spaces to use. So certainly the access to the, it just provides more access to the community. It's another space that we put to share with our residents. And also, IAR has the auditory component too, which makes it a little bit more desirable for certain groups. And those two are also close by, same area as the gym. So it does allow for more opportunity.
Great point. Just to follow up a question.
Sure.
And that is also a reference stream.
Correct.
So I think that's important to note.
Thanks.
Questions?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Quick question on the West District flooring. You said about remote chance of reimbursement from the state. Would that be the 28% also or the 236%? Or are we looking at a different number for that?
No, that's the same, we were agreed for that. There would not be reimbursement if you did it as an overlay project, which was the last project, like for the basement and replacements, we would be able to see reimbursement.
And that's just for the central corridor or are we looking at the whole school?
The whole school is in use. At some point, this would start a phase project, really start a program by doing the corridor first.
Other questions?
One quick question. Thanks for coming, thank you. Replacement of vehicles, are we looking at like some Suburbans or cars?
Yes, so we have Suburbans that we use internally to transport students. We have two drivers that not only do mail and other courier functions throughout our district, but they're also transporting students. So part of our capital plan is to make sure that we are moving through those vehicles, replacing and then shifting them to other purposes. So that is for Suburbans, but not for this, we're not asking for it in the 2122 budget, but rather for out years. This year, we were able to replace our mechanic vehicle, which we're very grateful for. Thank you.
Yes, I just, so on, just on the vehicles, I thought I heard during the presentation, you're just banking, banking the money for them.
Correct.
Okay. And then I'm going to just kick over to the telephone, you're going to be banking money, banking the money for future purchases.
That's what I said, well.
Thank you, Bill.
Just a note, please, everyone speak a little louder into your microphone, Sam in particular. I've been told. So you have to repeat everything you said. Okay, other question?
Go ahead, Joe.
You got one, Peter?
Well, I do and I don't. Can we, I don't know where to begin on this one, but I'm going to, maybe just for the benefit of the public, on the technology infrastructure, what are we doing this year specifically with potentially the $550,000? Are we playing catch-up? Are we expanding? I'll let Matt make it from there.
We're doing a little bit of everything. So we are playing catch-up because a lot of the money that would have gone towards classroom AV upgrades was reduced last year. We had to replace on the spot several projectors that failed that were kind of targeted last summer, but we held off as long as we could. And we are also continuing with a portion of our normal classroom AV upgrades as if we were continuing this year as well. So that you do see a much larger number for classroom AV upgrades in that section. Right now, we are, we are still having to replace projectors at the high school. Again, we're going as long as we can. And what we are replacing them with are devices that could then carry over to a new building as necessary. We are now coming up on the sixth year of AV upgrades at the elementary school level. So we are now circling back to elementary classrooms K4 and replacing those devices. At the time that we upgraded those, we upgraded them with projectors that required lamps. The newer technology that we're going with now are lampless projectors or LCD displays, which don't have replaceable parts essentially, or they don't have consumables. So whereas the typical overhead projector or LCD projector that one knows has a lamp that has roughly three to four thousand hours on it, the newer technology that we're putting in does not have those replaceable lamps. It also comes with ten-year warranties, so they last a lot longer. But a good chunk of that is circling back to our technology plan and addressing K4 classrooms.
Just, just following, I'm just curious, on these projectors, are they capable of being used to transmit or for the remote learning or some, some capacity?
These don't transmit.
They're not transmitting?
Yeah, but they are incorporated into the remote learning plan that we're using. So depending on how the teacher is interacting with the remote student, there are times where the webcam is focused on the front of the classroom and therefore, the image that's being projected for the students in person is also visible for the students at home.
All right, so it has the benefit that it can, it can be used for remote learning?
Yeah, so a lot of times, if it's fine detail, teachers are actually sharing their screens. So again, think of the projector in the room is primarily for the benefit of the students in the classroom.
Yeah.
And the teacher is sharing their local computer screen for the benefit of the students at home.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, Joe?
Just touching on Cohort C again, I know we did a survey. What numbers are we looking at, because I believe at one point for the high school, we're at 50%?
Yeah, it's constantly changing and part of it is Farmington's plan. Our return to school plan gives a lot of flexibility for families. We decided not to have a separate remote school, which has proven to be very challenging for school districts. So we're really happy with our planning over the summer because it created flexibility for the school district, but even more so for families. And so students can be on remote and then not be on remote and the parents just let us know. Sometimes students might not feel well in the morning and they're in-person students, but they decide that day they're going to be remote. But I would say that we have 30 to 40% pretty consistently on remote learning this year, which is live streaming from the classroom and not a separate remote school, which many school districts have selected. And I was on a meeting today and many of them will not select that model if we have to do it again next year and have a more flexible model. Because we really do want to be responsive to our community and as K3 so what? Sometimes families make different decisions depending on that. sometimes families make different decisions depending on that and also just family circumstances. So typically, it's about 30 to 40% right now.
Yes.
District wise, but it can be very different depending on each school. And so we do report out to the board at every board meeting where we are at a particular point. Our high school is scheduled to go back full in-person on March 8th. And we would move away from hybrid at that point. As all of you know, we've seen a steady decline in case rates in Farmington and both internal and external data suggests that it's time to move to full in-person. So we've been full in-person K8 and now will shift from hybrid at our high school to full in-person on March 8th.
So if they are in Cohort C now at the high school, they will not be able to anymore? They will have to be going in?
Oh, no, Cohort C is something that exists all year long this year for the governor's executive order and the Connecticut State Department of Education. So even when I, when I say full in-person, Cohort C is still available for families.
Okay, and obviously you'd have the numbers from your survey to say to show lots of them are coming back or intended to come back when this is the survey out?
For the high school, I think it was a little over 60% that are planning to be in-person once we shift to, on March 8th.
Okay.
But that's always changing.
And seemingly it's just about everything during the world.
Yeah, exactly.
Other questions?
I'll do one more. On the potential no wallis roof replacement, is there still a safe fund where we are eligible for funding for that still?
Yes, yes, that's why we separate out roof projects.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we then submit that to the state and we will get reimbursement on the roof project.
Do you know what the approximate reimbursement rate is on roofs?
Same rate.
Same rate?
28 points.
28 points.
So it'd be 28% of 450? Okay, but we always budget the 450. Okay, thank you. Joe?
And speaking of roofs then, for the high school 120, if that, if that does get passed to the high school, does this roof still need to be repaired without this being pushed off knowing that the high school is going to be built?
So the way we're looking at it, if this is a repair that will get us through our construction period for a new high school. So we currently have water infiltration, we've tried a number of mitigations and have them paid out. So we believe this is a necessary repair to those two sections listed on the slide.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Just a clarification, it's not a roof replacement, it's a roof repair?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a repair.
Just to clarify.
And that would not, a repair would not be reimbursable.
Other questions?
I've got a couple. As was mentioned in public comment, this $3,731,166 is a really big number. By my calculations, this is about the size of the last four years combined. If we were actually bonding some of it and we take out the bondable items, it would bring that down to 2.71 years versus our 10-year average. It just seems like this is a really big list. I understand there are some things, and it explains some of the items that are COVID-related. But regardless of that, it seems, so I guess my first question is, from the superintendent's request, what was reduced by the Board of Education?
In the capital project?
Yes.
We, we did not make any reductions.
So no reductions whatsoever by the Board of Education? Okay, and the drivers, I think I was hearing you say most of the drivers were, there were a lot of COVID-related drivers. Also the ESSER funds, if I heard you correctly, that was your determination that you can spend half and half? Or was that required that you spend half and half?
Is it two, if the funding is there for two years and if you don't use it after two years, it's going to be, it's going to be taken back. So that is more of an internal decision so that we have funding for both years for educational recovery. But it can be used all in, in one year as well. We decided it would be important to make sure that we're not utilizing it all in one year and then have a need for it in '22, '23 and not have the funding available. Just trying to be thoughtful about that. Funding is unusual for Farmington to get funding like that, so we really want to be thoughtful and careful about it.
Sure, yes, appreciate that. You did mention there was money that had come in, submitted and reimbursed. Do you have any idea how much of COVID that you've already received?
Yes, so we didn't get that before. Again, they could all submitted reimbursement, so we had to spend the money to get them.
And this is for ESSER funds and coronavirus relief fund. Again, the allocations were given to us and actually for the CRF funds, we had an opportunity to request more, which we jumped on and we were able to, because if you had your, if you had your expenditures organized and ready to go, you were able to receive additional funds, which was great. So we were able to actually get more than we originally allocated. I don't have that number for you.
I've got the ESSER.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, ESSER funds was $229,000.
So it was, and that's considered ESSER one, not ESSER two. It was 229,979 and then CRF, 466,668. I think I need glasses.
That's correct. You might need glasses, but that is the right number.
That's the advantage of a computer screen, it's larger without the glasses. Absolutely. Okay. Any other questions?
And just to reiterate what Kathy said, regarding those funds, they had to be expended during a certain period of time. We had to submit during a certain period of time and they were very tight timelines. Actually, last spring, we had to say what we thought we were going to spend the money on. We didn't even know what was going on at that time, but fortunately, we were able to just keep track of everything and.
And we were actually given more.
Correct.
Because we had everything ready to go, so they gave us more than what, what they originally had provided us.
So that, so the 466 and change and 229 is, those are all basically getting things refunded in 2020?
Those are all refunded, yes.
Okay. Brian, other question?
Thank you. Are you those ESSER funds for capital expenses?
I believe that the ventilation, right?
That was the one you mentioned earlier, this one.
Would that have come from that? I'm not sure.
The ventilation was, we were able to use from capital funds. But a lot of the things that we've expended, like I said, were technology, PTE. We had to move furnitures out of our buildings, store furniture, we had to buy plastic dividers, all of the really unanticipated expenditures that we did not plan for at this time last year was what we used.
I don't know actually if ESSER one had a facility really?
It did not, it could not.
So this is new for ESSER two. Had to put out of the ventilation, you know, because it was such an issue.
I was going to say, the school district, I've heard a lot of feedback from the school district about how they said we could use the funds and when we had to tell, you know, how we had to make projections on how we would use the funds. And ventilation certainly was something that district spent a lot of money on, so I think they have that message.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we spent a lot of money, not on capital things, but that we got reimbursed for it and it can't, even though we got that money because reimbursement and other things, we can't go to any capital expenditures?
Right, I mean, every time we receive the funds, there are restrictions.
Right, so it's just not money we can put out of the want. It's got to go back to the things that it went to that were, it was allowed for.
Right, that's correct. And then, and again, this last one, or the ones, the ESSER two is more about looking forward and we have to complete a needs assessment and an application for the funds. And we are being told by the Connecticut State Department of Education that it's to supplement your budget, not to supplant it. And that's, you know, a real distinction here that this has to not be taking things out of your budget to then use for ESSER two, but instead to really focus on those things like learning loss and learning acceleration, students', you know, mental health and well-being, and we, remote learning and family engagement and support. Just knowing the context of what's going on, but ventilation is in ESSER two as an allowable expense.
Sounds like those are the expenses we never really had before.
Right, right.
Okay. Does one little clarification thing?
Other question?
One other. Lauren, I was trying to keep track earlier when you were mentioning it. From the prior report, what's the rough number of this capital budget that is covering prior reports?
So on each of the pages, we usually identify which ones are, we have an asterisk next to each of the projects that would be K8 prior facility report. We would have to actually add those up, but you can just go page by page and see which ones are in the prior report, the K8 review, a facilities report, and which ones are not. And there are a few buckets that we use, and I think Alicia alluded to it in the presentation. There is a K8 facility report where we're pulling projects from there. We also meet with our custodians, so Sam and Alicia and Matt, with our custodians. And sometimes there are things that the custodians see that were not in the prior report, but they're starting, you know, to need replacement or repair. And so that is another area that we are always looking at because we want to be responsive to what our custodians see on a daily basis, so really the experts in our, in our facilities when it comes to that. So it's a combination of, of the K8 report and our custodians.
Sure, I think everyone hopefully understood the prior report was not going to be all encompassing because things are going to come up as time goes by, so that's very understandable. I would like, if you can, whenever you can, just to give us an idea of what this is. Because when talking about the high school project, which we will be in great detail, one of the questions people kept having, are you still going to keep up with the prior report? And all the calculations that we put together do just that. So I want to make sure we're not missing anything that we should be keeping up with so people could point and say, but wait a minute, it's this, that and the others. So I want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing heading into any decisions made on the high school. Any other questions? Any final comments you want to leave?
I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight and through thoughtful review of our capital recommendations. You know, we look forward to coming back when we present our operating budget and just really thank, thank you for your attention.
Thank you for coming in and it's nice to actually see you.
Yes, very nice. Thank you all, thank you.
Thanks.
At 7:23, and I believe this is the time we will be taking a slight break. Yes, we do. And before we leave, I mean, what do you think? We would look for a motion to make a tentative acceptance, accepting of the Board of Education's capital budget, keeping in mind there will be further discussions also.
I make the motion to tentatively accept the Board of Education's capital improvement request for 2021, 2022. Joe Campbell, for a second?
And just to be clear, this budget is the budget from the form they gave us, which is 200 less than the other ones. Do we need to mention that fall? It's in their presentation, $3,731,166.
That's okay, this is the potential.
Okay, just a, all right. So we have a motion in a second, any discussions? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes to them. Now, we will be moving to take a short adjournment. What are we saying, Kathy, 30 minutes?
I would say hopefully not that long.
Hopefully not that long, Kathy wants to all these very quickly. Okay.
You put in, you know, everyone, and how will that work? Will be on muted?
Muted video off, I'm going to have a screen out so that the audience will see that you're coming out.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. Temporarily adjourned.
Okay. We are returning at 7:52 to our meeting. And we will be starting with Director of the Cathy Blonsky.
Okay. So we have on Steve Blonsky, our Director of Fire and Rescue Services. He's first on for tonight, but again, just to kind of go over. We're going to be working off of this document right here that has all the capital. We're going to focus on the first year, what has the department headed here. Do you have any questions on the out years too? I thought I'd just briefly go through the fire department first. So the fire department has a total in its own page, page four. And we're working off the second column, requested 212026. So the fire department has five items. One of them is a turnout year, which is an item that we do every year, and that's a replacement. Then $125,000 for a communication upgrade, $32,000 for NOX boxes, $100,000 for N16 replacements, and $50,000 for a fire station renovation. And that would be to start the process on our main fire station. Steve, why don't you just kind of briefly go over the communication upgrades and the NOX boxes? Because I think those are a little bit more complicated.
Sure. The communications upgrade is to upgrade the portables and mobiles in the fire apparatus. This year, we're upgrading all the apparatus at East Farmington Fire Station. The next phase for the $125,000 is going to upgrade Farmington and start to upgrade Tungstis hose communications. And the NOX boxes are the encoders that are located on the fire apparatus that provide a master key so that firefighters can have access to occupancies for emergencies. And if there's not a key holder, they're not sitting on scene waiting for somebody to show up where that time they can get immediate access to the building without causing any damage.
And the communication upgrade project is, we were actually cutting that out into four years. That's from the first year was last year, and then it's three years.
Is there one other, is there? Counsel.
I'm sorry, you don't have, yeah, your stuff.
And I would request to call members of the council, since we all pushed our microphones away in order to have dinner, or bring the microphone back and start your days before you add questions to Steve.
Does everyone have any information, Erica? Yeah, there is. Oh.
Okay.
The other topic is the fire station renovations. You know, in the capital plan and the strategic plan, this is something that the fire department has been working on. We've had two various studies done. This would be to kick off and to get a building committee together and start with funding for an architect. So that would be for the fire station renovations. And you can look on the out years of that, you can see that it's, you know, $4 million for the next year, $4 million and $3 million. And those are the projections for a fire station, for all the fire stations for a renovation.
Okay. So, do we have any questions, Steve?
I have one. Just on the replacement of Medic 16, how many miles you have in that vehicle currently?
Forty-six thousand.
Twenty-six?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, okay. And you're looking to replace it this coming year?
I'm sorry.
This year, we're going to put a replacement, so we're like, we try to keep them under $50,000? Is there a better resale value, or?
Actually, we're looking to probably change potentially an SUV. There's a committee being established to look at what they want to replace it with. Probably a more economical friendly vehicle. It still provides the space that we need for the medical equipment that we carry on it.
Okay. So change it from one vehicle to another, would that change the price, or would that increase the price?
It would probably change the price, but it's all off a state bid, so it really depends. And then if there's any extra work they want to do to it, slide out trades and storage locations for the equipment.
Okay. So changing out, obviously, are we going down in price as we're going to an SUV? Or are we going up in price?
SUV, probably be less in price if they went with that. But again, they're weighing the options of whether they want to stick with the F50, which would be called a SWAT body, or they want to go to the SUV. They have a very 100% determination net.
Okay. And again, when they do so, what happens to the old Medic 16? Are we selling that?
We would sell it, yes.
What's the current price of a $50,000 model vehicle?
I believe when we sold Medic 7, Joe might know better, but we sold it to a department down south in Tennessee. I want to see, we got $5,000 for it?
Really?
Around there, something like that.
Yeah.
Joe might know better.
Yeah. It depends on the vehicle and what the market is at the time. But I think, I think that one was around $5,000. If you're a specialty vehicle, you really need to find some, maybe there are other departments where you need to find somebody who's, for whatever reason, would take it.
Okay. So we're just looking, that's as far as their X amount of year plan out?
Yeah. So we just want a vehicle, we usually do a 10-year replacement, and a larger vehicle will do 20-year replacement. We have an emergency replacement plan, and Medic 16 is up on there. They actually have 11 years now, so we've actually got an extra year for them.
Thank you.
The vehicle is going to be 11 years old.
Yes.
I have just one question. Steve, on the Medic 16 replacement, are the departments still taking the path they want to do with the type of vehicle? Or are we headed towards suburbans versus going with the SWAT bodies?
It looks like we're making a move toward more suburban and SUV style vehicles.
Why is that?
More dynamic, more economic. They're smaller, they're not as big and wide. Obviously, again, in small places, easier for firefighters to drive, especially our newer EMTs. They don't have that large body on the back of it. But because of the vertical space in the SUVs and suburbans today, we can outfit it, you know, with the storage space we need.
And they're going to hold up just as well with the amount of equipment we're going to put in the back of them, rentier wise?
Yes. Many departments are moved to SUVs for first starter vehicles for EMTs.
Okay.
Other questions? Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Can you just talk about the communication upgrade plan generally and the out years? Would, so I have a sense with that.
Sure. For this year, we're replacing about 46 portables, five mobiles, and three station radios. And then for the following year, for the request, we're looking to replace the rest at Tungstis hose. So this period of requesting this year is to do Farmington and start Tungstis hose communications. And then next year, we'll look to upgrade the rest at Tungstis hose and start replacing the officer portables. All our officers have their own portables because they respond to their POE so they can sign out with dispatch. And if they respond to the scene, they give a sign up and start the command process. So, and then after that, we look at doing the rest of the officers, the fire marshal vehicle, our safety officers. And then we're looking at the other two apparatus that hopefully guards communication upgrades. Thank you.
I got one. Steve, is just, is next year, 2022, 2023, $75,000 for extrication equipment. Is it now going to start replacing individual stations' extrication equipment now, or?
Yes. We're looking to, with the technology advances, we're looking to go to battery powered e-drive tools. So this is a point of an extrication committee in process right now. They're demoing a bunch of different models. And on a townwide basis, we're going to decide on one standardized type of extrication equipment for all three main stations, all the stations.
Excellent idea.
Gary.
Question for you. Is it worth us keeping up number 16 for another house? Or are we getting $5,000 for a sale?
The other house is Medic 7, so we could potentially look at replacing it, that, you know, 16 and replacing Medic 7, which is out at Oakland Gardens. But we have to see as far as the maintenance goes. I mean, Medic 16, like I said, about $46,000 miles. I think Medic 7 has about $55,000 or $60,000. So we could potentially use it to replace that as a backup medicine.
Yeah. No, okay, it's still fairly new vehicle, a private truck. If my last truck had $210,000, I'm going to.
Well, the other part is, the vehicles do go to medical calls. 2019, it had 1,223 medical calls. The Tungstis hose, this truck responded to 720 of those. So there's a lot of drive time, a lot of stop and go, fast speeds, low speeds. So the trucks, while the mileage is low, it does take a pretty good beating going to emergency calls, so.
And I'm sure a lot of idle hours go.
Correct.
Other questions, Steve?
Evan.
Yeah, on the, for the 2122, the fire station renovation, this might already be mentioned, but is that just for design, that $50,000, or?
That's to go toward the potential operating in a building committee for an architect or a site rep?
It's really just startup money. Startup money. Startup money, yeah. To just get maybe an architect on board and start the process.
Thank you. Other questions?
And the turnout here, of course, every year we just do $50,000. We're rotating turnout here each year. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? You got anything I see?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Steve?
Thank you.
So next up, we have Russ Arnold, Director of Public Works. And Highway and Ground is on page, page three.
Thank you.
Steve, can I make an approval for the fire?
Yeah.
Well, I make a, I make a motion for a tentative approval of the fire department's capital budget.
Joe, Captain Farrell, say it. I'm motioning a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Much best to them.
We have Russ Arnold here. We have three different areas we're going to talk about. It's the engineering, the planning department, and highway and ground. So we start with engineering, and that is on, page two. We'll talk about the general fund tax appropriations first. And we have $25,000 for light pole replacements, $50,000 for bridge repairs, and $50,000 for environmental compliance. Russ, maybe you can just touch on all three of them just briefly. And I think the light pole replacement may be something of interest. Is that somewhat useful?
Sure. Can you hear me?
You can. We're answering.
So the light pole replacement is, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we purchased all the lights, streetlights, from Eversource. And this is money to purchase any poles that are fault, that fall down, or that are damaged or due to an accident, the light heads, et cetera. And we've been doing this for a couple of years now. It's worked out very well. We do the majority of the work in-house with our own people. We have to pay Eversource to turn the power off and turn it back on for a minimal charge, but it really works out well for us. It's been engaging. So we probably replace about 15 poles, 15, 20 poles a year. And they're the wood poles, not the telegraph utility poles, but they could be standalone wood poles that have a light on top.
Russ, would you say in general, I think, from my perspective, us now owning the light seems to be a, was a good plan that we, we are still saving quite a bit of money on it, and it's been working out well. So what is that, what did you say, three years?
I think so.
Three years.
Is there a recommendation on your parts versus yours?
Yes, thank you.
Little fishing for customers there.
No, it was Ron's idea.
What were you doing, leasing them before?
No, we paid them monthly fee for each light. It works out to our advantage.
And then the bridge repair?
Bridge repairs, so basically over the past, I want to say about seven or eight years, we've been banking money for the bridge repairs. We, when we did the trail over, went on the trestle over the river and over Route 4, the state was nice enough to give us the maintenance of that. Also, many of the other small bridges or cross culverts that we have numerous of them through town, this is the money that we use to bank to repair the bridges. On the bridges, there are some minor bridges that we do every year. A couple of years ago, from a bridge inspection report, the bridge on Meadow Road had some scouring issues, so we had to go and we bought the guy's waders and they put a bus on, had to hand fill the, so the aquatic river was rippled along the edge of the bottom of the bridge. So, but it's really geared towards big ticket items. We have had that some, people look at the trestle, probably have about a $350,000, $400,000 bridge repairs on that for structural repair.
And do you even know your job on?
By the way, the rails and trailer.
Oh.
The trestle over the river.
Yep.
And what, the environmental compliance is basically a somewhat banking in the stormwater?
Correct. So there's a DEP has put out an unfunded mandate probably about six, 17 years ago now. Basically, we have to do, comply with their requirements to make sure we're monitoring our stormwater discharges within town. We have to go and sample, we have to inspect, we have to clean all our catch basins every year. Sweeping is part of our general duty is maintenance. But there's a whole laundry list of items, of things that we have to report on every year, which we do to make sure that we are still in compliance with this DEP mandate.
Were we looking to fill positions like last year to help you out with that?
Yes. What we've done, we've filled our civil engineer position, and we're going to hire a consultant. We've used some of this money to help us do all the sampling. We have 758 outfalls that we have to inspection sample if they're during a weather flow. We have over 4,200 catch basins in town that we're required, we're supposed to clean every year. One thing that's helped us out with that is by changing to a straight salt for our winter storm prep. Instead of using a 55, or a 12 to 3 salt ratio, we don't have a lot of sand to get in our catch basins every year. So that's helped reduce and improve our catch basin and discharges.
So, the one thing I wanted to put on is we do have a $2 million bond for the roads. And Russ does have a map that we're going to put on the screen. One thing, we talk about this every time that we show a map, and the roads that are going to be done, the roads are projected. Remember, I always just say that this is a fluid document. Things do come up, and so, you know, we, Russ and Scott, and of course with Scott, they do a really good job of going to the different neighborhoods. But again, this document, we always get nervous about showing it because sometimes it does change. So, and if you could put up that document, and then Russ can go through it.
One of the most anticipated roads of the year. Thought it was the garden.
This is the one that I sweat the most on. So, you know, see here, and we have in season one, can you slide that up a little bit? Thank you, um, so basically we break, we break the paving year down into three seasons, the spring, summer, and fall, and in this, we call them season one, season two, and season three, just to make it simpler, um, season one, the fir-, in the spring, we're gonna start off and pave, uh, Oak Ridge, Dunwood Court, so that'll be our first go-around, if people remember, excuse me, uh, Oak Ridge has been on the paving schedule for about ten years, we've been back and forth waiting for C and G to make a determination if they are going, if they were gonna extend the gas, and not extend the gas, they were going to, they weren't going to, so we've been back and forth with them, um, and we, last fall, we did a paving Stone Gate, Brear Hill, in preparation for doing, finishing that neighborhood, uh, C and G did not extend the gas, they did not feel it was warranted, not enough interest, so we're gonna do that first thing, we will then go to Devonwood, which will be the final paving, uh, from Route Four into the gazebo, which is in season two, in this area here, uh, we'll go from the gazebo up to the phase four, uh, paving line, you'll see in the red, the darker red, right here, that's all been complete, everything in red is complete, so that'll round out Devonwood, and then in season three, if you could, yeah, we start over here, and what, can you move slide over to that way, Anna? Yeah, that was, um.
Do you wanna do that?
Yes, please. We're over here, Unionville, uh, those two areas, one over here with Robin Road and Burge here, as Kathy says, we, you know, I'd love to pave more roads every year, but there's just not enough time, uh, we do a thorough review, our list changes based on the winters we have, uh, Robin and Burge here should have been probably paved last year, um, it's really in bad shape, however, uh, the Britten Water Company is extending water, um, Batterston Park Road is making that connection, they're gonna put stubs, stub on on Burge here and on Winterwood, so they're gonna, we're gonna work with them to see if they're gonna extend it, it doesn't make sense for us to go in and pave, then have them come in and dig it up and put the utility in, so we will do any patching that we need to do to get us through that area, and if we, if they're gonna come sooner than later, we're gonna jump back and go over to the Woodrow, Woodrow Road area, which was on our list for last year, but COVID, we delayed a little bit, uh, so that's still a priority for us, so, we're kinda juggling the paving shift depending on the utilities, and I stress, we always work with, you know, the water companies, the gas companies, whoever, just to make sure that we're, uh, you know, we're coming after they, kinda doing the upgrades of their facility, doesn't make sense for us to pave and then, and then dig the road up.
And Joe, re- remind us for this upcoming season, how much money do we have left?
Uh, right now, we have about a million dollars left from the previous bond.
And that will take us for one season?
Um, no, that'll probably take you through, uh, one and a, one and a half of those three seasons, so it'll take you to half of, of this paving program.
And you've been doing two million, uh, about every other year?
Correct, so if, if the bond doesn't pass, you know, regroup and see what we need to do to figure out where we can go and get the best bank for it, but there's one thing that we, you know, we've learned years ago, working with the, uh, C I P from the state, or the V I P, excuse me, is, there's a mobilization fee, so, for the contractor to come in, if we haven't paved, say, on, you know, Oak Ridge, then we have to go over to Robin, then we have to come back to Devonwood, we're paying mobilization, you know, which we try and get, the more time you put down, the cheaper the price, so you stay in the neighborhood, we try to finish the neighborhood before moving on, that way that neighborhood is complete, there's no, and just from a record-keeping standpoint, the neighborhood's done, years and years ago, it used to be, you know, you paved a little bit of one street, a little bit of another street, and it was very difficult to go back and figure out what was done, and with Scott and I learned years ago that we do the neighborhood as a whole, and then move to another neighborhood, and we try to maintain, you know, equality between the O eight-five and the O three-two, just to make sure everyone is getting a fair check.
Other questions for engineering? Or roads? None of your roads are getting paved while you're here.
All right, the next item is Highway and Ground, I think. Highway and Ground is on page C three, and we have, uh, three, three items, one is irrigation improvement, one of them is, uh, one of our larger dump trucks that we do snow with, and one of them is a tool cat, which is in our parks department, so it's three pieces of equipment, um, that we are looking for, for the highway department, so I don't know if you have any specific questions on those.
Questions on these three pieces of equipment? Gary has one, though. Gary.
Uh, Russ, thank you for coming out, um, our oldest truck we have on the road right now, following snow is?
Nineteen eighty-six.
But how many miles?
Uh, well over a hundred thousand, you know, it's a, uh, old Mac that we just keep, put, keep it on the road, you know, it's a, you know, good truck, but it's, it's due, so, and what we do is, we, we've had a few trucks that, uh, we bought in the last twenty years, um, that, they weren't, you know, when they say they don't build them like they used to, there's some of them that we got rid of just because they didn't build them like they used to, but that's our oldest one.
Uh, my half off this year, guys did a great job, appreciate it.
Let's hope it's all done.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Thanks, CJ. Uh, Russ, uh, with the dump truck there, I'm just noticing that, like, uh, for twenty-one, twenty-two, you're requesting a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, then the following year it's two hundred thousand, then two oh five, and it gets all the way up to two ten, is that an anticipation of the increased cost of buying a new truck, or can you explain that?
Absolutely, uh, it's an anticipation of the cost going up, also the new emissions requirements are making trucks more expensive.
Thank you.
Other questions? I got one other, just, uh, just, uh, I'm looking ahead here, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, we're gonna start Tumsis meet, what, what would we be, what would be the initial phase of that, or is it too early?
Right, if I could just interrupt you here, because before we get to that one, is that we have two other accounts?
Yeah.
And one of them is with, you know, with Tumsis meet, so maybe I'll talk about that, and then go into Tumsis meet.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll run that.
So we have, um, we have on O, it's Tumsis meet improvement for a hundred thousand dollars, and that's from other funds, and Joe, maybe you can just explain where that O is from?
That's going to be from, uh, the state has a grant program called LOSIP, we get about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, and we've been using some of that money for, uh, various products on the sidewalks, and Farmington Center is learning for that, and we're also gonna put some of that money towards, uh, this, this project, the Tumsis meet.
And the thought for this part, for the hundred thousand dollars, is to, um, do the paperwork park over?
Yep.
And I know some of you have heard about it, it's really not, it's in rough shape, and we decided to make that a priority just because it's very, it's in rough shape, and it needs to, needs to be, uh, attended to, but bringing me to Tumsis meet, you remember that, um, we did a facility study on Tumsis meet, and one of the issues that, you know, I have a counselor that we're gonna have to talk about, is that the Tumsis meet, uh, work, you know, it's, you know, slated at four point five million dollars, and, you know, when you're trying to, even putting in five hundred thousand dollars a year, or four hundred thousand dollars a year, is a big chunk of the amount of money that we need for our overall budget, so, you know, there's, we have the facility report, and it's broken out, um, but there's extensive amounts of work that needs to be done at Tumsis meet, and so, you know, four point five million dollars, you know, putting five hundred thousand dollars in, really on the target that you guys are giving us, um, it's just, it's difficult to start funding Tumsis meet, so it's something to talk about, um, you know, I don't know if it's a bond later on, or something along those lines, or we really make an effort to have, we have to really talk about it, and start putting cash away every year to really start addressing, um, the situation there.
So next year, you're, you're just banking money?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then, the only other item I wanted to just mention too, was, uh, Highway Maintenance Truck, and that's an R, that's a reappropriation, and Joe, maybe you can tell them where that money is coming from?
Sure, it's, every year, um, for texture, at the end of every year, we look to see what capital balances we have left over from various projects, and we do have about seventy-five thousand dollars left over in various equipment purchases, pre this year's equipment purchases from the Highway and Grounds Department, so what we're proposing is to accumulate those all together and reappropriate them to buy the, um, Highway Maintenance Truck, so, um, the leftover balances come from the heavy-duty dump trucks, they come from other Highway Maintenance Trucks, uh, they could come from any, any of the equipment that we buy for the Highway Department, this is something, actually, I think it came to you last year or the year before, and we did an appropriation at the end of the year, we moved a lot of the un, unextended balances in the C I P towards other projects, so it's something we do every year, we're supposed to do it as part of the process, of the capitalizing process, instead of, instead of waiting until the end of the year.
And, yeah, and as you know, with, uh, the limited capital funds last year, we are trying to at least, you know, keep up with our equipment, the demand is more than what we fund, but I think between doing this other fund and also reappropriating the money, we're not even too far behind, and we're able to get the equipment that we need, especially I think, like the, the expensive equipment, the snowplows.
Joe, could you just revise the, uh, what are the restrictions on reappropriating those funds, if it's in capital?
Um, it's up to the council to reappropriate them, it's, any of the balances, once the project is closed out, um, usually they wait about a year after the project, make sure it is close, truly closed out, and then they come back to the council, we come back to the council, and through a formal transfer process, the council would move the money, they would both move the money from one project to another project.
But it will generally stay within capital?
Yes, um, we generally keep these in capital, and we try to fund other capital projects like we're doing here.
Yep.
If we didn't do the reappropriation of the seventy-five, then you would see this as a, a request for cash outlay for seventy-five to replace the vehicle, so this, you know, this holds down the capital budget in the long, in the long run, the only, um, and again, this is money that's appropriated through the, through the budget process, bond funds are totally, or, or grant funds are a totally different animal, uh, bond funds, we have to go through, it's a totally different process, and grants, you actually have to turn the money back to the state, the state, but that's where we got the money from.
Great, thank you. Other questions on the grounds? Is no one gonna ask about the tool cat? Go ahead. What's the tool cat?
I don't know. No, it, uh, it's a piece of equipment that we bought, uh, what did we get, that like an old five? The D P grant, yeah, we got that through a D P grant back in two thousand and five, um, it's, it's a, it's a machine that is, they took a go-kart, it's like a, uh, pushman that needs to hit at the golf course, and it's got a trailer in the back, and it, it has five or six different attachments, you can drill holes for fencing, you can plow with it, you can haul equipment, haul tools with it, um, we use it primarily for the maintenance of the trail.
Okay, great. I see no other questions?
Great, then the next one under Russ is, um, the planning department, and that is, uh, that's on page C four, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Farmington Center Improvement, and that is something that we've all been recently discussing, and that is, um, we're wanting to make sure that we have enough money so we can have our replacement sidewalks, and we can get to Highland Park Market, and so this is just to make sure that, and, uh, that's what this is for.
So these are the sidewalks in the building?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on the planning? Do you know?
I think that's it for you, Russ. That's it.
Very much. Thank you, Ross.
Next we have Nancy Karen, uh, who's the Director of Community and Recreational Services, and this account is on C six, and I think we need a tentative approval.
Yeah, uh, Paul, this, can I just put it all into one engineering, highway, and grounds?
Yes.
And planning?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion for a tentative approval of the engineering, highway, and grounds, and planning departments, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two capital budget. Joe, Captain Farrell, second. I have a motion in a second, any questions, being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, pass down. Now.
Anyone notice on Nancy Karen, our Director of Community and Recreational Services?
Welcome.
And we are on page, um, C six. Nancy has, uh, two items, uh, for general fund cash appropriations, the first is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Stone House renovation, that's the building, um, of Route Six on twenty-seventy-seven, and twenty-five thousand dollars for the youth center renovation, and Nancy, for the old timers here, from Farmington, what building is sometimes referred to that, so?
The old church.
The old church in Unionville. So, uh, Nancy, if you could just briefly describe, the, the Stone House is a banking account, but I think we have saved the money that we are going to actually, if we, if we put this money in, do some more.
Correct, um, the project itself was divided into three different phases, the first phase was looking at all the exterior, the shingles, the masonry, the, uh, A D A ramp, um, the stairs and the porch, the second part was the interior, and then the third was actually site improvements, at this point, I think we have enough to do phase one.
This is, again, the building next to the, near the golf course, the pretty stone building.
We took a night tour of that building last year.
Yes, yes, um, that is, I mean, that is a building, I, I know that, I, I feel strongly that we really need, it's been vacant now for, I think, two years, uh, probably a little over two years, that we really need to start, um, putting some work into it, and, um, getting, you know, start, uh, doing some work on, um, for the youth center renovation mandate, want to describe that, the youth center, we just had an architect this past year,
who did an analysis of the, um, of the entire building, and actually came up with the same type of basing, and the youth center, our key point in the youth center that we need to work on is downstairs in the basement, it's had some flooding and some mold and yield issues, that really should be addressed first, so that'd be a first thing that we would start with.
Questions on Stone House or the youth center? Okay, Nancy, this for the, um, you said, what programs were, was going on with our athletes?
At the youth center is, um, our teen center, so the fun cops, um, you know, a variety of programs coming in, also karate as well for recreation.
Okay, and what do we see going on with the Stone House when that's included?
Well, the Stone House right now actually has occupants that live there, upstairs, and then downstairs is supposed to be a meeting area.
One of the big things we would like to do is fix that outside porch area, and have that, again, more meeting space, um, and then the inside, it's really, as you guys, I think, we did go inside, it's really not that big, large in there, but really just clean that up for some meeting space, and then the outside space, having that really for some meeting space.
And the Stone House, the cement in front of where Kathy's referring to, it's just really chipped away, and even Harrell opened the doors, he's, what, he did a repair right there? Oh, can you hear me? Yeah, sorry.
The, the video, we didn't hear you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
As every fall last year, uh, when we took the tour, when we were having the same discussion last year, uh, there was a lot of, uh, mortar work to be done, and, uh, risking the leaks, which anytime you get in a leak, or even as you're talking about in front, uh, you go through a winter, and it's a compounding problem, so long we put it, along the way, you put it off, to figure that particular issue that's gonna be repaired.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Do you know?
Okay, great, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, uh, I make a motion for a tentative approval of the Community and Recreational Services account for the capitalist financials. Joe, Captain Farrell, second. I have a motion in a second. I have a motion, a second, and discussion. Anything done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Most passing now.
Next up, we have Paula Langston, Chief of Police, and the police department is on page C five. Hello, Chief.
Good afternoon.
I'll give you anything for that.
Perfect, please, thank you. Long day.
So we have the chief capital expenditures, and that is on, what page again?
C five.
C five. C five. So the chief has four items. One is seventy thousand dollars for a supervisor SUV, which is a twenty-four hour vehicle. There's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for technology improvements, fifty thousand dollars for the communication upgrade, and twenty-five thousand dollars for the shooting range improvement. Think, Chief, if you wanted to maybe focus the first topic, it's just on the technology improvements. And we talked a little bit in my narrative about the, what was required in that.
So we currently have watch guard video in-car cameras. And the new police accountability, Public Act Twenty Dash One, requires that we also have body cameras. And there is a state model policy that we have to follow, which says that every officer who's dealing with the public has to have a body camera on them. And then there's caveats for how long we have to have it, retain the information, and those sorts of things. So as you know, we've been looking at body cameras and it seems every year that we, we've talked a little bit about body cameras. The technology in years past has been such that, really, it would have been wasting money. And what we're seeing now is those agencies who have body cameras have been, now need to get all new body cameras, just like, you know, the technology. The technology works now very well, and so it would be the time for us probably to start looking at that. It is required that we have them and we have them in place by June thirtieth of twenty-two. So in this next fiscal year, we have to have body cameras and have them implemented by state law. So this would, this, we already have the in-car cameras. So really, this is just for body cameras and also for one year of cloud storage. It should be noted that every year it's gonna be about forty thousand dollars for cloud storage for the body cameras, and that'll be a recurring fee.
Chief, on that, the one eighty minus out of forty, is that the total cost for, there's no other technology in there, right?
Correct. This is one hundred percent for the body cameras.
All right, Chief.
Good, all right.
Good, thanks for coming. I asked our representative slap to Nico about possible funding coming from the state. I haven't heard back from him yet. Have you heard anything since you're probably more involved?
So interesting you say that. I had spoken to the woman from O P M, from the state, who does this grant funding. And we are supposed to get up to thirty percent is what is in the law right now. She informed me, and I informed the chiefs of police for the state of Connecticut, that the bonding has not been approved for this new round of police body camera funding. So I guess it's in the state's bonding and it's not been approved. So the application for that funding and reimbursement is not available yet. But in the law, it says that we would get up to thirty percent of reimbursement for it. Now, it is a reimbursement, so you have to spend the money and then show them that you have them and that you actually are using them, and then they'll reimburse you up to thirty percent. But currently, those funds are not available.
Okay, and you're saying up to thirty percent. Is there other language in there that may not get us to thirty percent?
No, the hope is that, so they've already done a survey from all the police departments on potentially our costs. And so I've submitted this to the state so that they know across the whole state about what the liability for the bond would be. And so certain cities are getting up to fifty percent, and so there's kind of a breakout. Where we fall would be up to thirty percent.
And how, what makes us fall into that criteria? Is it by population, by size of forest, by?
Nope, it is, it's an economic, yeah, I'm not sure the exact term, but it's, it's an economic, I would say.
The economics of the community.
Yes, the economics of the community.
Thank you. So there probably was an ability to pay and if they still have any?
Yeah, there was a term used in the, and I should have brought, I have another binder with the state statute and all the language. I couldn't give you the exact language, but it's, that's what it falls to, is that of, the municipalities of lesser means, whatever they use for that.
But you feel comfortable we would get, you keep saying up to thirty percent is the wording, but they seem to indicate it would be thirty percent?
Yes.
Close to, yeah, that's about fifty-four grand after the fact. So that could pay for the next year's one year worth of cloud storage.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Thank you, Chief, for coming out. A question for you, is that body camera for every officer we have, or do we go daily?
Yes, it would be a body camera for every officer, which, so obviously, body cameras have been around for a while. And speaking to many of the other chiefs and at seminars, they find that that's the way to do it. Because you, you know, don't forget, officers sometimes are held over on cases, right? And sometimes they're ordered in, sometimes you have a serious situation where you're calling people in, they need to have their own body cameras. And they need to have them available every time. So they'll be issued to the officer, they'll each have their own body camera that they maintain.
Great, thank you. So how many body cameras is that?
So it'll be sixty body cam, oh, I'm sorry, it'll be fifty body cameras. And the thing with that is that we need some spares. Because the reality of it is, they, by the state law, they have to have the body camera. So saying that it's broken is not an option. So we have to have spares so that if it does break, that we can then replace it immediately.
Chief, is that clear to your administrative staff? So if a hot call came in, or your captain goes out, your lieutenant comes out, they have to have one automatically?
Yes, so we'll all be wearing them, yep.
So all sworn officers?
All sworn officers who deal with the public.
Including yourself?
Yes.
Wow. What are, this is just, for communities who do not meet the deadline of July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, what are the, what are the penalties? They hold back on funding to towns or something because they're not adhering to the law? What happens if we don't meet that date?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know what the, you know, I always try and make sure that I hit the marks of the law, but I don't know what the repercussions will be. I would imagine that they would probably impact your grant funding.
Yeah.
Thanks, CJ.
Chief Langston, I can see you. My question's on the cloud storage. Is that a limited data storage space, or is it for a certain amount? Like, is there, is there a possibility that in the future we would exceed, if there's, if it's limited to a certain size, a certain number of gigabytes, is there a possibility in the future that we would exceed that and have to go beyond the forty thousand in the future?
So no, it is unlimited, because you can imagine the hours and hours and hours of videos that are gonna be captured on these body cameras. So it's unlimited storage, but I think that we are well enough aware that once we have this system and it's in place, that those fees will probably go up significantly. Because, you know, obviously, body cameras are becoming more the norm in law enforcement. And I do foresee that, you know, they're gonna, those rates will rise, obviously, for that storage. Thank you.
One more, CJ?
You know, good. Since you said that, Chief, I know like the cruisers, they're activated by light speed. So how's it gonna be activated for the in-person camera? Motion or is it running twenty-four seven, no matter what?
So that's a great question, Joe, thanks. So they are tied into the, they will be synced with the in-car video for those officers who have in-car video. Those admins who don't have in-car video, or some PJ cars, there's certain cars that do not have video, the detective cars, those you have to turn on and off. It is always recorded, though. So if you forget to turn it on, you go back and it'll pre-record a certain portion. So even though it's off, it's actually always recorded.
Okay, so if the officer is at full speed during a soccer game, he doesn't have it on, so if it happens, he forgets to activate it, they can go back and grab that, that footage?
Yeah, and that's a great point. So let's say you were, you know, at a soccer event and all of a sudden a fight breaks out. Now, your body camera, you wouldn't have it on just watching the soccer game, right? It's for when you're interacting with the public in a law enforcement capacity. So he wouldn't have, he or she would not have it on at that point, but all of a sudden a fight breaks out. Well, you're not, you know, I know the older officers, it's gonna take some time to remember to turn it on as you're doing these things. So it'll be some muscle memory. Our hopes is that the younger officers will grow up with it and basically do it automatically. But even though they miss it, they'll be able to go back and then record it after the fact, it's called. Actually, that's the actual term, record after the fact, so.
Okay. How long do we have to, how long do we have to retain this, this video? How many years or is it perpetuity?
So there's a minimum guidance from the state. And it basically is two years for most incidences. But anything, ninety days for anything that doesn't turn out to be. So you had a broken down car, and I stopped, I have to turn my body camera on because I'm gonna interact with you at your broken down car. And after ninety days, that can automatically delete if we don't, you know, check it off. If I go to a domestic violence call, that has to be saved for two years. So there's classifications for all of these. And the good part is this will integrate with our in-car, we already do this with the in-car cameras, that they get labels depending on what it is. If it's a domestic violence call, if it's an arrest, if it's a, they automatically get labeled. And based on the labels, how long it'll be retained.
Okay, all right, so that answered my other question I was gonna just ask. For an officer who had an uneventful night, that body camera footage would be delayed, deleted in ninety days?
Correct.
Okay. So Chief, do you have to create another position now for someone to go through all this? I can imagine how much footage you're gonna have daily to scroll through and clean out on your time period.
So it's interesting, and we haven't addressed that yet, and we'll, it's gonna be very interesting. To your point, larger agencies or medium-sized agencies have a staff of, you know, at least one, sometimes five people, who all they do is go through this video to make copies either for the courts or, now, let's not forget, there's an arrest, four officers were there. Somebody has to go through that video, download all four of their, not only their dash cams for the cruisers, but also their body cameras, and then release it to court. That is the easy part, because the court can get the whole unedited version. It's when the media or somebody else requests a copy. Somebody now has to go through those hours and hours of video to remove minors, pictures of dead bodies, victims of sexual assault, and there's a whole category of things that you have to remove from those videos before you release them. The question becomes, how does the municipality or town pay for it? So I will tell you, there's two theories to that. One, the idea from Las Vegas PD, what they do is, they tell you it's about how long, and they hire a company out. So for F O I, you can charge the person requesting it the cost for the municipality. So if somebody requested that video, we would hire a company and say, okay, this is what they want, for you to go through those hours of video, what is it gonna cost them? Let's say it's a thousand dollars. Well, that person can choose to have it done or not. So I know that works for like Las Vegas, because then it reduces some of the requests for video. So we'll see, we did not have for our in-car camera, we did not have a huge request for in-car. The problem with the body cameras and what a lot of agencies are seeing is, I get stopped by an officer, I think he was rude to me. What do I then do? I say, hey, I want all his body camera footage for the last ninety days. Well, guess what? We have to give it to him. So we have to go through ninety days of body camera footage and remove those that are protected by law that we cannot release, and then release the other one. So that's where they're seeing big problems. New York PD had an issue with this, that's exactly what I just described. And so it's gonna be interesting to see how that plays out in the future. So that's a great point, Joe, and we did not allocate anything for that right now. If we start getting inundated requests, our idea is rather than purchase redaction software, is to hire a company and say, hey, if you want it, it's gonna cost you ten thousand dollars, it's gonna cost you fifteen thousand dollars. That way the taxpayers aren't paying for, you know, something that, you know, depending on what it is.
Right, so in terms of saying, so just like everything that officer has as cameras could possibly be an F O I request to see. So is there protocols already established for medical calls, checkups of a little being, stuff like that, that won't be released juvenile, obviously, you said, because if they fall into juvenile status?
So it's only the things that are protected in law, and I actually have a policy here that, that, so there's a model policy, which is the minimum requirement from the state that we have to have. And basically, they outline the things that you're not allowed to release. And in this thirty-two page policy, I'm sure I can find it if you were, but it's those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Any questions, Chief? Okay, seeing done, I would just recommend everyone contact our state reps and mention that hundred and eighty thousand dollar new building we have. Let's see what they can do to help us get something, only that thirty percent, anything we can do. Anything else? No, all right, thank you very much, Jeff.
Can I hold you one second? Peter asks about the shooting range.
Yes, so, so the shooting range needs a new roof, obviously. We were supposed to do it last year and just kind of ran out of time and funding. But besides that, the inside was flooded a couple of years back, and we never really, we kind of dried it out, fixed some of the sheet rock, but it is in really bad shape in the bathroom, and as Joe can attest, I mean, it is, it's really bad. It's time to, you know, we really thought it was a priority this year to try and clean it up and get it into more usable. And obviously, there is gonna be a lot of training going on in this next year in that, I'm sure most of you have heard about the Use of Force Bill and the new Use of Force Law that is gonna be enacted. And so there is gonna be a lot of Use of Force training going on in this next year. So we're gonna be using that, obviously, the range and simunitions. Was it two years ago that the, you approved a Milo machine for us, which is a simunitions or simulation type of, and really, that's gonna be required. So agencies that don't have that are gonna have to go seek one out and find one to use. So I'm glad that we have that, because it's going to be required in the new law, or the new policy. I post that you actually have hands-on training, that it's not just classroom and going to a fire range, fire range, but that you actually do scenario-based training. So we're ahead of that curve, and we're ready, and we do it right now and have it.
So the cost, are we shared with West Hartford? Are we doing like, hey, they take care of us, or they're in-house trained? We're helping them out when they come through our range to, you know, to their West Hartford school training?
Yes, and they also have a simulation, a Milo machine. But as far as the range, they do, so for those of you who don't know, every year our officers have to go through week-long training, that's the minimum. And we do it through West Hartford In-Service School is what we call it. The firearms for that school are conducted in Farmington, but the classroom and all the other portions under in West Hartford, we don't pay a fee for that. So it's kind of, we use their instructors, get that training, we get our E M T, our N C I C research, all those training things that we get, and so it's kind of shared, different departments break. training things that we get. And so it's kind of shared. Different departments bring different things to the table and the one thing that we bring to the table is a firing range for that.
And my last one, have we looked, I know back in the day when I was there, there was talk about moving the range over to the old TILCON site. And back then, the, the chief could have come to an agreement with TILCON, blah, blah, blah. Any thought or talk about maybe choosing a different site due to the flooding issue that we do have at this current site?
So I, and I did try and do that with TILCON because TILCON has much more property. Obviously, there's just the location, the yardage that we would have, the backdrop of the, the rock cliffs and, and those sorts of things. And they just were unable to come to a deal to let us use it as a shooting range. So our snipers are able to use it on a, you know, a per occasion basis, but it's, it's not allowed to be used daily.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Other questions for the chief? Okay. Thanks, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to tentatively accept the police department's capital improvement budget. Joe, have a personal second. Any discussion? You're in none. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Pass it now.
The next department we're going over is the town managers and that is on page B5. We have Brian Rush, our IT manager, joining us right now.
Just so everyone knows, it's Brian Rush who sends those phishing teams out there trying to cause us into clicking on things.
We got a bunch from you last day.
So we have one, two, three, four, five items for the, for general fund cash appropriations. We have $150,000 in technology, $100,000 in town hall improvements, $50,000 for building equipment improvements, $260,000 for revaluation, and $30,000 for land records and reindexing. So maybe I'll just briefly go over all of them. I'll start with the land records and reindexing for $30,000. And that's from Paula's account and that one we talk about every year is a very popular account. And Paula, maybe you can just briefly stress how far along we are on it. And during COVID, this has been one that we're really happy that we have in funding it because it's used. And Paula?
This is a continuation, Ms. Kathy, of the project that we've been doing for about eight years now. And this will actually bring us back into the 19, late, or 1945 to 1950. And it's been a wonderful project this past year because almost exclusively people are able to search for the land records off-site on the internet. And we've been very fortunate to have that.
And they, and the public collection?
It's really a very popular program. The next item, $260,000 for revaluation funds. And this will begin to be used to begin the process of reappraising all of real property by October 1st, 2022. Every time we think we're done with revaluations, back again. So it's an expense, and it is expensive. So that's another item. $50,000 for building and equipment improvements. This is a fund I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about. And I'm not sure if any of the council people have been on when we have had that account. And I'll have Joe, with our buildings and equipment, it's expensive if things break down unexpectedly. Fire trucks, highways, plows, things of that nature. And in the past, I don't know, Joe, did we start maybe five or six years ago? I lost track of time.
It's probably close to 10 years ago.
10 years ago, we started to put some money in account, a banking account. And then what would happen is that when we've had some of those unexpected repairs in our buildings or in our equipment, we would use those funds instead of taking money which was unbudgeted out of the operating budget. And that, that money lasted up until, I think, last year, Joe?
Yes, it actually lasted until this year. We finally ran out this past summer when we had some mechanical problems. We faced that problem so we're at the police department. That caused us to use the rest of the money.
And it, it does work out well because it's, instead of having our operating budget with extra money in it, we use this account and we built it and we only use it. But, you know, like for the police department, when we had our issue, it'd be nine, $10,000 a truck, it could be that much money. And so this is an account we'd like to start building up again. So that's what that, that's what that is. $100,000 in town hall improvements, this is a banking account and offer spending it. And primarily the funds are being used for multi-phase for security at the town hall. I think we may have talked about it at some other time, but one of the things that has actually had with COVID is that we've accelerated some of the issues that we've had to be dealing with with town hall security. And that has helped us along with doors being closed and various things. But right now, we're looking to have all our doors being keyed, have electronic systems, have security cameras. Erica, what else is on your list?
Yeah, just more call buttons for different places. A lot of expenses in the video cameras and in the key box system. And we're also redoing all the exterior doors except for the front.
So it is really, it is an issue. I mean, with the COVID, it helps because one of the things is that we've had a security consultant come in and obviously, you know, our building's open, it's very open and it's not secure. And so we have to really make some changes to it. And I think the key system where employees are gonna have, the doors are gonna be shut and you're gonna have a key system to get in and out. And that was something I was a little bit hesitant about before COVID. But now we're somewhat used to having our doors shut. So I think that's, you know, kind of a blessing. But that is what the town hall improvements are for. And $150,000 in technology would be used for upgrading server infrastructure replacement, which is a joint project with the Board of Ed, a partial phone system upgrade at town hall, Staples House in the highway garage, and the purchase of a network prevention system to improve network security. And that is why I had Brian here to explain what model that is.
Yeah. So the network intrusion prevention system, it would be used purchase of new line intrusion prevention system would improve network security by actively looking for network traffic to identify potential intrusions and irregular activity on our network.
So a security hazard system?
Yeah. So right, right now, we have, we have an IPS, Intrusion Prevention System, in our firewall that's, that's detecting the traffic that's coming from outside in or inside out, but it's not actually looking at the traffic that's upon our network.
And our phone system?
Yeah, our phone systems were installed in 2012. We're looking for $40,000 just to replace the handsets. We've been doing various upgrades to the software side of it, but the handsets are, are eight years old at this point and they're starting to get pretty beat up. So we're looking at replacing those at town hall, Staples House, and highway. And then there's also another $35,000, which would be like a banking account to do town hall rewiring with, you know, network cables and everything to, to computer locations. Basically, the wiring that's in this building has been here for over 20 years. Certain drops are starting to fail and it's about time we look at it and rewire it.
And what is the project we've been working with on before with the Board of Ed?
So the, the project with the Board of Ed, we've been putting money aside every year to replace some of our server infrastructure for our virtual servers. This past year, we bought some new storage for it. We're probably looking at adding a new host, a new server at here and up at the high school for this year. And this is kind of like just a banking account that we're planning on doing a larger project in fiscal year 2425.
One of the things I know that, again, is a positive, and I wasn't sure if the board mentioned it, but it does really work out well with the board and the town kind of having the joint IT and they work together and they do various projects. And again, it's support system too with us, Matt Ross and his group and Brian and Todd. So it is something that we collaborate and work together quite a bit with the board on various things. So that works out well with the board. And that's it for our side.
Questions?
Yes, my question's for Paula, actually. On the land records reindexing. So just looking at the seven years here, I see that the, the last year that we're planning for 30,000 is fiscal year 2425. So does that mean that we will be completely re-indexed, digitized by the end of that year?
No.
Okay.
The, that's an approximation of 30,000. It's just out there for the project because after this year, this coming up next year, we're gonna be moving from the type of indexing that we know now modern indexing into our very old books. And I haven't really even talked to them yet to get after this and what it costs to go back to the first. It may not be able to be done. I'd like to go back to the 1920s if I could, but we'll just have to see. This is, this is just to put a place on the road and keep the project going.
Gotcha. So approximately, I guess, how far back, what year would, would, what's in this seven-year capital improvement plan, how far back would that get us?
I'd like to think it would get us back to the 1920s.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the town side? Paula, how long has, how long has this been going on? Do you have a head?
I think about seven, eight years.
Great. Good thing you got a good head start after the COVID.
Yeah.
Let's see, the, all right, and just for the public knowledge and the revale, how has this number been changing over the years? I mean, we're talking about looking at 260 this year and 100 next year. How has the cost changed over time?
Joe, could you answer that?
Sure. This is actually, is very similar to the cost from the last time. There hasn't been a lot of change. And what, what's actually been occurring is, most of this is now being done, it's, it's being done basically site inspections, but not interior inspections. So it's basically been drive-bys of homes. It's very similar to what we did the last year. The drive-by, we walk the neighborhood, take pictures of the homes. And we'll also send out data mailers to all the homes and ask people to verify the information that we have on the property record cards. Because of that, and because the growth in the number of parcels hasn't been that great since the last revale, we estimate that the cost will be very similar. We, we actually went out to other towns to see what they were getting, towns that have been doing revales in the past year to what they've been paying per parcel. And we just went along with those, those costs. The, the only problem we run into with revales right now is there's a very limited number of companies doing them. So if they get busy and they're, they're really into it, then the price goes up. But right now, we hope, we start in May of this year, I guess it's 20, we're talking October, being ready for October of 2022. So we're, you know, a year and a half away. So getting them started now, we'll, we'll be able to get in mind, get a couple of good company and, and give them enough time to do the revale without rushing it.
Appreciate your human element. Any other questions for the town managers? Being done.
I make a motion to tentatively approve the town manager's capital improvement budget. Joe, have a personal second?
You have a motion in a second. Any questions? You're in none. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passed. You know. Very nice walk through on your first round of capital, gentlemen. We'll now move on to item.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly just do a little wrap-up?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So, so we've gone through the capital budget and I just want to, again, something that's just what we talked about in the, at the beginning, that, you know, our town policy is usually funding at 2.5% and we are proposed at 3.64%. So again, it's, it's a substantial increase. We're working on the budget for March 9th and our entire capital budget will be in the, in the proposed, my town manager's proposed budget. So I think that you all should be expecting with putting 4,227,155 in for the capital, you're gonna see a high budget coming through. So just to be aware of that and just want you all to know that. And then we'll talk more about it when we go to March 9th. And as you all be prepared, you know, we'll prioritize some of our items and go through it. So we'll be ready to pass the March 9th week.
Great, I appreciate that. And the, just to that point, what'd you say the percentage is we're at right now with this?
We're at 3.64%. We, our, our lowest, we're supposed to be at at least 2.5. I was in my head kind of going what my proposal is, was it about 3%?
Do you have the numbers for 2.5 or 3.5?
Yes, 2.5 of the entire capital budget would be 2,822,000. 3 million, it would be, I mean, 3% would be 3,386,000. And we're right now at 3.64, which is 4,227,166.
Ready? Agenda item E2, I make a motion to set a special town council meeting on February 25th, 2021 at 7 p.m. Joe, have a personal second?
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just that I left the agenda on your places. It is going to be a Zoom meeting and it's Thursday.
Does this Thursday resume it? Any other discussion? You're in none. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passed. You know. F executive session being done. Before we move to adjournments, I will give you our quote of the evening by Anthony de San Exupery, the author of Little Prince. As for the future, your task is not to foresee it, but to enable it. With that.
I make a motion to adjourn the February 23rd, 2021 town council meeting. Joe, have a personal second?
You have a second. Any discussion? You're in none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. You're adjourned. 9:07.